Just waiting while Emily gets us going on the YouTube link onto the website and then we'll be ready to open the meeting. All right, Emily has confirmed that we are live on YouTube with, on our website and MHTV is also recording. We have myself, Sarah Gold, Emily Barron, Megan Taylor, and Sarah Fox with us this evening. David Harris cannot be with us. So I will officially open the meeting and call to order at 7:02 PM. All right, that leads us first to commendations. John, do you like to tee that up?
I would, and I'm sure that Principal Zaski has her commendations ready to go, but we have actually put her on the agenda this evening so that we can commend her on her impending retirement. So I'm going to tee up each of her colleagues to wish you well in your retirement and to commend you for your service to the Marblehead Public Schools. So Mr. Oda.
I remember meeting Donna after she started at the Bell School. Opening day, she hadn't met her staff yet, and she was a wild woman with energy that I have never ever matched. And I'm going to miss our weekly meetings, Donna, and I wish you the best on the Cape.
Awesome. Thank you, Principal Oda. Principal Satterfield.
Thank you, John. I'm actually at my daughter's soccer game at Tingley, so I'm mobile, absolutely. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank Donna for those wonderful years through the transition. She's been a great colleague and a great partner getting us through, and I appreciate everything she does for, did for Marblehead Schools and the Coffin and Gary Bell community. So congratulations, Donna, and enjoy your retirement.
Thanks, Sean. Principal Murphy.
So when I first became principal of Village School, I didn't really know Donna all that well. I was assistant principal at the time. Donna reached out within the first couple of days, offered me her support and help. And that gesture went such a long way. I'll never forget that. I'm thankful for the building project, for putting us together in the same building, because from there I've gotten to know Donna very well and her high level of energy. And I'm forever grateful to have a colleague who has shared her wisdom and her guidance, and we're very excited for you. And I feel that I have a friend for life now. So thank you, Donna. Congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you, Mandy. Principal Fox.
Well, see, I'm gonna miss Donna because we have like three things in common. First, we both started the same year here at Marblehead, albeit I have two months of seniority on her since she started her first day with the students. Secondly, we both worked in middle school, so she has that experience too. And most importantly, she's Wisconsinite like I am. So I mean, that's the single, you know, she, what does that mean to the town? It means that we're probably the only two that can look at that and pronounce it Oconomowoc correctly. And we're probably the only ones that have had butter burgers with cheese curds followed up by frozen custard. But with Wisconsinites, what that means is you get someone who's loyal, and not just the Packers, but that's shown in Donna and how she's fought for her students over the years. You get someone who's honest to a fault, and for those of us that have been in meetings with both me and Donna together, if you ask us for our opinion, we're gonna, we're gonna tell you, because you've asked and we're polite too. So if you ask, we're gonna tell you everything. And then the last thing is, you know, we understand teamwork, and that's what I've enjoyed with Donna. Because we have to snow blow out five feet, you know, everybody's gotta chip in. And, you know, no matter what, Donna is always there for us, and a quick phone call or email away, she's always part of the team. So Donna, best of luck.
Thanks, Matt. Principal Bauer.
Donna, you're so special that I had to come in person to see you for the back in person meeting, but I just want to thank you for your support. You really, really made the transition for me very easy, and you always seem to reach out whenever there was a down point. You always reached out and were so positive, and I really appreciate that. It meant a lot to me personally. Helped me get through a few tough times here, and I'll always remember your professionalism, your dedication, and your just love for students. And really, I'm gonna miss you and I love seeing you in meetings and your honesty and integrity, just unbelievable. So I wish for you to have a great retirement, and thank you.
Well, Donna, I hope you didn't mind the blind side by your colleagues, but we wanted to let you know how much you have meant to the team in the Marblehead Public Schools. And I can imagine after Principal Fox's commendation that you're not going to go without a rebuttal, so I will turn it to you.
You're unmuted.
I said everyone's starting to know me very well, so I have a few things to say tonight myself, now that I've been given the opportu- opportunity. So first of all, I wanted to thank the school committee for having me here tonight and allowing me to speak. As Matt had mentioned, or maybe it was Brian, I can't remember which one, but basically I started my first day in Marblehead on the very first day of school in 2011. I was greeted by a jam-packed Lower Bell multipurpose room filled with nearly 800 people, including all the teachers, all the parents, and all the children attending the Bell School at that time. Everyone was so excited about the first day of school and meeting their new principal and teachers. It was pouring rain that morning. As I walked into the school, which I'd never seen before, I looked for Superintendent Dr. Moss. And in the crowd, I saw this big arm and wave come up, and I slowly moved, made my way through the crowd to see him. And I said, Greg, what is all this? And he said, this is how they do it here. And I said, what? And he said, apparently, all the teachers meet the kids on the playground and then walk them to their classes. And he says, what this is, is the backup plan for rain. And I said, why don't they just open the doors and let the people in? And he said, did I tell you, with a laugh and a chuckle, he says, did I tell you how much we need you here? We have had many laughs over that crazy first day in Marblehead, but I was up for the challenge. Dr. Moss was very clear with me about my task at the Bell School. He had arrived in Marblehead about six weeks prior and had quickly assessed the needs of the district. He talked about leadership and told me he hired me to change the culture of the Bell School. We were in sync immediately as our administrative training was very similar, and Matt already told you a little bit about that. But Wisconsin administrators have a keen focus on collaboration, teamwork, and motivating others to do their very best work. So I've been asked to do commendations tonight, and I cannot do all that at my last school committee meeting without taking a little walk through my experiences here in Marblehead and the Bell School history and important happenings. I would like to first of all stay, thank the various school committee members who have supported the educational teams over the year. Thank you for keeping the focus on supporting the educators in this district. On Wednesday, February 1st, 2017, the staff of the Bell School was recognized in a special ceremony in the State House and was commended for high progress for our recent MCAT scores. Tonight, I would like to commend the former Bell School staff for this achievement. I believe this achievement gave the Bell School teachers the confidence and knowledge that they were capable of academic growth, excellence, and improvement. A tad about the organic garden and planning. Jean Skona and Katie Martin came to me with a proposal to create, create an organic garden on the Bell School site. We planned for nearly a year before construction started. We had many community volunteers and contributors to this project. The pictures of all the work and all the transitions that happened are now in storage. But basically, we changed a broken down path and an overgrown ledge behind the Bell School into a place of beauty landscaped and designed to provide authentic outdoor learning and authentic outdoor learning space with many science and ELA curriculum connections. This effort with the connections to the curriculum continues to grow today at Avalith, Coffin, and Village School, and certainly the organic garden has a focus at the New Brown School. I would like to commend all the many community members who supported the original Bell Organic Garden project by making generous donations and also to the physical labor and effort in the construction of the organic garden at Bell. Friends of Marblehead, over the past 10 years, we have received so many grants from the Friends of Marblehead. Some have supported professional developments such as Sarah, Sarah Ward, who gave a workshop on executive functioning to our staff and parents. Most recently, we received a project adventure grant that was written by Amy Shepherd and Rachel Levitt to do team building with the staff at the Lucretia Joseph Brown School. These workshops will help build a new inspirational community at Brown. Thank you to the Friends of Marblehead for supporting educational initiatives and setting the stage for new beginnings at the Brown School. I have to talk a tad about Fine Arts Music Art PE Library. Each year at Bell, we had a beautiful display of student artwork and musical performances, including our winter concerts. These things have not happened since the school was dispersed around the district and the COVID pandemic hit. These were some of my most memorable moments at Bell as a Bell School principal, when the school was filled with the parents and the children highlighting their great creative work. Hats off to the specialist teachers who always work together to pull the pieces together and highlight our students and their creativity with Fine Arts nights and winter concerts. I am so excited about the mural at the Brown School and that that has come into a reality. It's a celebration of art, culture, and history. What a wonderful centerpiece for the new school. Next, I have to move on to the PTO. I would like to commend the PTO groups and past PTO presidents. I've been so fortunate working with the highly committed PTO presidents and PTO parent groups over these years. These groups have provided thousands and thousands of dollars, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars, to support the many needed items for the schools. For example, almost all of the smart boards at Bell were paid for by the PTO through their funding efforts. The Magic Hat Volunteers and most recently the Fun Run that was started five years ago by Becky Seidel is a major fundraising effort and event. This year, with the combined Avalith, Coffin, and Bell PTOs, the fundraiser run raised nearly $18,000. The PTO has supported a wide range of assemblies and cultural, cultural events for our students as well as special activities like the grade three celebration last week. One of my most rewarding moments came last week when the past PTO presidents reached out and sent me a huge, beautiful flower arrangement in honor of my work in the district and the school. And at the last PTO meeting of the Avalith, Coffin, and Bell PTO, they announced that they had purchased a school bell, a real bell, a real bell with a ringer inscribed with my name and the dates that I have been in the district, and they are hoping for it to be hung at the new Lucretia and Joseph Brown School. I was so taken back with this gift. I'm still trying to process it. I would like to extend a sincere thank you to my committed PTO folks. I have appreciated your support and positive working relationships. Thank you for this honor. Lucretia Joseph Brown School Building Committee. One of my awe inspiring moments was touring the Lucretia Joseph Brown School a few weeks ago. David Harris and his leadership and the commitment of many, many others to get this building right should be recognized. Hats off to the building committee and everyone who in some way participated to, to help develop and create this new school. Jean Raymond and his design team and taking the information from the educators and making it into a reality. The school is a gem, and it reflects Marblehead in and making it a community to be proud of. As I am tonight, I always try to say something that reflects a little bit about who I am as a person, as a leader, so that people can relate to me in some way. I have had a wonderful educational career. I became a principal in 1989. And yes, I am that old, believe it or not, and I appreciate all those experiences that I've had along the way. A colleague sent me an article on trust and leadership, and this is a high value that I have held. My experience is that trust is built day after day, day in, day out, how you act towards and treat others. Leaders need to earn credibility, not by what they say, but how they carry out their role. I believe the foundation of trust is manifested by professional respect. I would like to share just a small piece of an article written by Paul Zach, who did research on employees and how to foster trust and engagement and why it is so important. There are eight important steps outlined in his article, and each component is critical to the process. I would like to take just the last quote from the article. Zach says, "The sweet spot is when employees are having a sense that they are working towards a high purpose in a trusting organization. Trust and purpose mutually support each other, providing the mechanism for extended oxytocin release, which provides happiness. So joy on the job comes from doing purpose-driven work with a trusted team. A quick and easy way to measure an organization's culture is to ask the people, how much do you enjoy your job on a typical day? As the New Brown School lifts off the ground and new visions are created, it is important not to lose the importance of building a positive, trusting school community. This aspect of leadership can be overlooked, but it is essential to the staff who dedicate their lives to your children. When the staff is empowered in doing their very best work, this shuffles down to a very simple idea, sending the kids home happy, and this is the best atmosphere for learning and success is likely to flourish. Best of luck to the employees across the district and families who have worked so hard this year to get us through the pandemic. Thank you for your support. We could not have made it without your help this year. A big shout out to my elementary colleagues, Brian, Sean, Mandy, and I guess I won't forget you, Mr. Fox, or, or, or our other little high school guy, but yeah, big guy. But thank you so much for everybody, and thank you for sticking with it and sticking with me this year."
So I believe that your fellow Wisconsin native would like to say one more thing.
One more thing, on behalf from the five principals and Julia, who's a parent of yours, we just wanted you to not forget Marblehead. So we'll be dropping off this print here for you tomorrow. It's always take a little bit of Marblehead with you, so you don't forget us.
Very cool. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Donna. Right. Thank you very much, everyone, for everybody's kind words to Donna and Donna. Again, we wish you nothing but the best and enjoy that retirement. All right, school committee. Does anyone have any commendations this evening? Megan?
I just wanted to give a little shout out to Principal Bauer and his team, all the students and the families for just a fabulous graduation. Mother Nature came out for us. Turned out to be a beautiful evening, and it was just a great celebration of what everyone, you know, we've all worked together to get to this point this year. And I just think it was a fabulous night. So well done to everybody involved.
Thanks, Megan. Anyone else? All right, Dan Howells, that brings us to you. Hopefully, our audio is gonna work okay. We've got a little bit of feedback, but that's okay. This is Dan's last meeting with us, and so he has also brought with him his replacement for the coming years. So Dan, I will let you take it away.
All right, so this is my 2020 to 2021 school year wrap up. So school this year began on September 14th, which is a much later start than usual. And not much was going on at this point as we were all, you know, mainly getting used to online classes. And there was also a lot of uncertainty about what clubs and sports could and couldn't happen. Then in early October, we began our hybrid learning, which was the first of many schedule changes that took place over the year. Also around this time is when some extracurriculars began, so boys and girls soccer and cross country started at around this time as well. The National Green School Society also hosted multiple cleanups around town and continued to through the year. In the winter, the Performing Arts Department worked hard to create virtual performances, performance videos in place of the usual concerts. And the Jewel Tones Acapella Group also placed second at their quarter, their quarterfinal for the international competition for high school acapella. The swim, gymnastics, basketball, hockey team, and hockey teams all, and indoor track teams all had a successful season despite not having their usual playoffs, though the boys and girls ski teams did win for the North Division. The senior class had their first ever Family Feud event. The Drama Club put on a virtual production of Yearntown. The junior class had their junior class auction. The freshmen, sophomores, and juniors held various restaurant and plant fundraisers. And now we get to the spring, which is where a lot more things began to happen, especially in person. Students began full-time in-person learning in the, in April. Senior project began for seniors. We had the Third Annual Cultural Feast. The track, volleyball, baseball, tennis, lacrosse, and football teams all had or still having successful seasons. And the football team, despite not having their annual Thanksgiving Day game, did get a win over Swam Scott during the regular season, which is always exciting. The band, chorus, and orchestra concert took place outside on the field, and the Drama Club had their production of the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee also held outside. Additionally, the DECA Club at MHS, the Distributive Education Clubs of America, that team won, was recognized for their work throughout this year. I'd now like to acknowledge, acknowledge some students who were recognized for their athletic achievements this year. Loden Rodriguez, Catherine Comstock, Lily Gerson, Annika Haley, Ella Kramer, Josie Pullen, Brian Coleman, Will Scholl, and Samantha McKay were all recognized by various groups, the Salem News, or in Loden's case, Gatorade, which is pretty cool. So this year was certainly not all bad, although there were a lot of things that were new to us. So I'd like to highlight some things from this year that I think we should continue doing even in a post-COVID school year. So outdoor classes, for instance, definitely nice to get a, to get some fresh air and a change of scenery. And this year, we tended to push it a little bit further into the fall and winter. But, you know, when it's not benefiting us to be outside, and it's just a nice day, why not go outside? More frequent mental health checks and opportunities for students to check in with social workers. There were a lot more that took place this year, and I think that they were definitely beneficial, obviously in a tougher school year, but just in general, I think it would be great. And recording slash live streaming events, making performances, games, and ceremonies more accessible, I think has been great this year and has allowed people to see our school in who normally wouldn't have been able to. So that about wraps up my final report, and I'd like to say it's been a pleasure to hold this position for the past three years. And going to all the school committee meetings as a student has been a really unique experience, and I'm very grateful for the respect that everyone has shown me through the past three years. I really appreciate it. So now I'd like to introduce everyone to Yassen Cologne. He will be taking over this position as I have just graduated. My main point of, my main point of contact with Yassen has been through the Jewel Tones Acapella Group, which we were both in. Yassen stood out to me as a student who is very mature and responsible, and I know that he is also a very, a very engaged member of the school and town community. So I thought, so I feel confidently that this position will be in good hands when I am gone.
Yassen, welcome.
Thank you.
Dan, thank you very much. It's been just a pleasure. You know, you started at the same time that I started, so it's been wonderful to sort of be on this journey with you. It's exciting that you've chosen the next person, and we're excited to have him at our meeting starting in the fall. And I thank you for doing that. Your update this evening was, you know, as they all have been, is just impeccable and a wonderful glimpse for us into the student community that really helps us understand at a, at a very real level some of the higher stuff that we can get, you know, lost in at these meetings. And so it's always really wonderful to hear from you, and we really appreciate it. We have a little something for you as a, as a going away. I'll let them pass it.
It has my name on it. Wow, that's awesome. Thank you so much. I've never had a gavel before. This is so cool. Thank you.
I think that's probably going to be the first of many gavels.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Does anyone else have anything that they'd like to say? Sarah, I see you're hand raised.
Dan, you have never ceased to impress me. Every meeting, you come extremely prepared. You're very well spoken. You give a report of every, you know, a wide range of what's going on in our schools. It's very reflective. And you're just a very, very impressive student and young man, and I wish you the best. And I really sincerely, sincerely hope that if you, you know, come back to Marblehead after your college journey, that we see you on school committee, and you have a reason to use that gavel, because I think you'd be a huge asset. And I will support and hold a sign for Dan Howells, and we hope to see you. And I, and I welcome your replacement, and I'm really excited to get to see him as well. So I wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
So can I just say something? You probably don't, you can probably hear me from here, but Dan, thanks so much. I mean, similar to Sarah, I, you know, we started at the same time too. So you're the only student representative I've known while I've been on the committee, and you've just been so organized and professional and mature. And I'm just so happy to have you here every morning, you know, every meeting and give us an update on what's happening in the schools, because we're not in here every day, so it's great to hear what's going on. So best of luck at college. I know you're gonna crush it. And Yassen, welcome. We can't wait to have you onboard in the fall.
Well, thank you very, very much. It's been a pleasure. And best of luck. Dan was telling us earlier that he is going to Rutgers, and he is planning on studying music education. So we wish you nothing but the best. And I'll be sure to get updates from Dan's mom as well. Thank you, Dan. I'm gonna pass this box that you'd like to have that. All right, that does lead us on to public comment. So if anyone would like to give a public comment, they can feel free to raise their hand with the raise hand function. Just please remember to state your full name and address for the record. Jonathan Letterman.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, I thought Dan did a great job, and, you know, one of the few good things that came out of the COVID experience is the ability to have, to live broadcast all of these meetings and get more public participation. One of the few good things that came out of the COVID experience is the ability to have to live broadcast all of these meetings and get more public participation. What I wanted to ask is, do you anticipate after COVID mandate for public participation and sort of remote participation is a requirement, do you anticipate still allowing the general public to be able to participate the way they do now under current restrictions? So that's my question. Thank you.
So I will just speak very briefly to that. We are working to figure that all out. The COVID open meeting piece has been extended. So we will be obviously following that. And then I am hopeful that over the summer to work with MHTV as well as the tech department at the school department to figure out how we can best make this accessible to the most people possible. Jean.
Hi there. I ran out of my vegetable garden to come on to school committee meeting, not knowing that Donna was going to be commended for her service to the public school. And I'm so thrilled that I ditched my dry vegetables for this because I would like to commend her too. She was such a pleasure. Frustrating at times, Donna. Hi, Donna. It was, it was a lot of hard work. It was perseverance. It was caution. It was, as you said, collaboration and teamwork to build over 5,000 square feet of beautiful outdoor space and garden space for the K through three program at the Bell School. And it was, it was really a true honor to work with you. And thanks, you know, thanks for mentioning Katie and I. I also want to add that Donna, when I came to you seven years ago and said that I had been going through mindfulness training to teach kids, I asked you if you would put your faith in me to add that to my curriculum in the outdoor gardens. And, and you and the faculty at the Bell School supported me. And I really, you put your faith and trust in me and, and I really appreciate that. So I wish you, I wish you the best of luck. I would also like to give a shout out to the Marblehead High School seniors, the officers from the National Green School Society that I've been working with for the last year. Sophie Houk, Lucas Scola and Anne Saban. They are incredible young adults and activists and passionate about their causes. And it's, it's been such a pleasure to get to know them and I wish them the best of luck. And I will say that I did meet the rising officers of the NGSS group and they're, continue to blow me away. Also really fantastic young adults. Last, sorry, I'm going on just one more public comment. I missed the last school committee meeting, but I did watch it. And I saw that Sarah Fox had made a motion to get rid of polystyrene in the schools. And I also noted that that motion died. It was not seconded. I did a little bit of digging and as you probably all know, in 2014, the town passed an article removing polystyrene from businesses. And an exemption was given to the school, which was requested by the school. And at this point, you know, we've, there have been many conversations about getting rid of it, you know, being a polystyrene-free district. And I, you know, I heard in last, the last school committee meeting that there was a school committee member that was questioning what it, what it is. And another one pointed out that it's carcinogenic. So knowing that we are all, all of us that are present in this meeting tonight and that come back to them are here for the kids, right? That's, that's why everyone's volunteering or working or supporting the district. We are here for the children. I can't imagine that anybody wants our youth eating off of polystyrene, a known carcinogenic. I would plead with you all to figure out, collaborate with the town, with nonprofit organizations like Sustainable Marblehead, to really make a commitment to getting rid of a known carcinogenic toxin that our children are being fed on. And I'm, I volunteered. I'm here to help. So with that, I'll, I'll put it back to you guys. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, Jean.
Can I just clarify on that piece? Jean, thanks for your comments. I appreciate it. But can you guys hear me? I hear an echo. Is that right? Just to clarify on the polystyrene, I believe, and you know, we can go back and look at the, the video. But I believe why we didn't move forward with that motion is because that's the direction Superintendent Bucky is already working towards. So that's the goal for September is to not have polystyrene in our schools anyway. And what we asked him to do was to come back to us if there's gonna be an impediment or something that the school committee needs to do to support that. But that is the objective for Dr. Bucky. Am I correct there?
That is correct.
There was a motion.
You disagree?
Well, I'm saying there was a motion and it wasn't seconded. And that was the point that Jean was making.
Yeah, and I think that Megan was just clarifying that the district is committed to that and that, that as an operational level, they have said that. And that if it comes to school committee, that we will be supportive of it.
It did come to school committee and you weren't supportive of it. But we don't respond to public comment. This isn't the time for this, so we'll move on. But it did come to school committee and it, it wasn't supportive.
And we are able to clarify, which is what Megan did. Scott Solberg.
Yes, I just wanted to, being from, coming here 10 years ago when Matt and Donna came in and coming in from Wisconsin, I did want to be able to say the word economy walk to everyone so we know exactly what Matt was referencing. But also to really thank Donna, when we got here and our child was in the school and had some challenges. She came in the classroom and observed and then met with us and her first words are, what are you seeing that's going on here? And we said, here's what we're seeing. And she goes, yep, I agree. That's what I saw too. And just that sense that she's right there with us as a family was really comforting at a time when you're dealing with, you know, challenging situations. And so Donna, thank you and just all the best. I think it was just amazing to have you in our district and it's gonna be a big loss. But I also wanted to just give a shout out to Eric Oxford, who's gonna be presenting tonight on a plan that he actually shared some of the preliminary pieces, I hope, with our, with our CPAC. A month ago, I'm hoping that this is what he's gonna talk about. Really excited. I hope our community can get behind it. And just want to say, you know, with, with leadership that we have in our district and certainly with the support of the school committee, we're starting to see the Eric Oxferds, Nan Murphys really stepping up with some innovative practice that's gonna take our district into the next level. And I'm just really, really excited about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, I don't have any other hands raised right now. So that will take us on to the school committee communications and discussion items. Just a note for committee members, I did move this up this evening at the request of David Harris, when he thought that he was maybe going to be able to attend the first part of this meeting. But unfortunately, he could not attend anything with us this evening. So the first piece up is the minutes. Dan, could you just mute yourself? Sorry. I think that's where the, thanks. The minutes, so we had in the minutes for two, eleven, twenty-one and two, twenty-five, twenty-one. I know one of them was a late add, so I will ask before I ask for a motion, is everyone prepared to approve both of those tonight? Or would you like me to do them individually? Two, eleven and then two, twenty-five, I believe two, twenty-five was the later add. I can't remember.
I'm perfectly happy to, I know we've set the precedent precedent in the past where, I think it was Megan was uncomfortable voting minutes. At, you know, when I put them in and she didn't have 24 hours to look at them. But I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to vote if everyone else is.
Okay, I think it sounds like everyone else is this evening. So I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from two, eleven, twenty-one and two, twenty-five, twenty-one.
So moved.
Megan moved. Can I get a second?
Second, sorry.
Emily, second. Any clarifications or additions on that? Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah, did you have something?
It was more when I was reading through it, I noticed that we state in there resuming the adoption of a new math program, which had begun prior to COVID. And I didn't know, maybe I should bring this up later, how that kind of has further ramifications, how we talk about how this is, was a pre-COVID problem and but we're paying for it with COVID. So I don't know if, I mean, obviously it's, it's, it's the truth. It's part of the minutes. But I didn't know if the way we memorialize that is, is going to be a problem.
It's my understanding that Dr. Bucky had a conversation with someone high up at Desi on that and that that's not an issue. All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Baron.
Yes.
Megan Taylor.
Yes.
And Sarah Fox.
Yes.
All right, that passes. Those passed four to zero. Thank you. Okay, then it brings up the vote on the superintendent evaluation summative report. We had a few additions that Lisa and I were able to work in from earlier this week. And then we had things put into the Dropbox this morning. Emily, I'm seeing your hand is up. So we'll just kind of open this up to, to what would people have in addition to the conversation from two weeks ago.
Okay, so when we discussed the summative evaluation at our last meeting, the discussion spiraled in a negative direction and that was not my intention. And as a first-year superintendent, starting during a global pandemic, I feel, or I believe Dr. Bucky has led our district with tenacity and determination. And I am confident we will all take what we've learned this past year, both positive and negative, and use it towards making this the best district for our students. It's exciting to look forward and see what the collective work of our district, our admin team, faculty, teachers, students, parents in our community will bring to our schools. And for this, Dr. Bucky, I would like to thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent summative evaluation as presented at our last school committee meeting on June 3rd with the two suggested edits, one, the addition in the comments in step four, page three, and two, the strike through in the comments under standard for page 10.
Okay, Emily's made a motion.
So I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and it is seconded.
For clarification, you're making a motion to approve them with your edits and not mine?
They weren't my edits.
Or, so the, the, because my, my understanding was we were gonna put in the pieces that, that we felt we had agreed that we felt we wanted included and I had sent those in. So are you suggesting we not include that?
Well, I wasn't clear where you wanted to put the edits. Or if you want to explain more, we can change the motion as of now.
I just wrote each section and that, because we talked about a goal. I wrote each section and what the goal was, and I just literally took the, the verbiage directly from my, my evaluation.
So I guess I'm really struggling with the addition of those. And because I feel as though Lisa and I worked incredibly hard to balance the, the thoughts of the committee so that no one member was overrepresented or underrepresented. And I guess I feel like in addition, in adding those things, you know, with, with the changes that Megan suggested, it's literally moving one piece up to a different area. This is adding additional pieces. And I feel that it is, that it quite frankly, over represents your voice, Sarah.
Okay, I mean, if everyone's opinion has changed since last week and, I mean, I know we all received phone calls concerning this, that, that, that that's the will of the committee, that's fine. My understanding was we would just add that everyone was okay if we added, as long as we didn't amend new language or change our rating, that if there were comments that particular people were concerned had been left out, that that was okay. But it's to the will of the committee.
I think I made it clear two weeks ago that I was set on what was in front of us at that point. But that there was others who felt differently and that we would put that back in and then bring it for another discussion or further discussion to the committee. And so the reason that, that Megan's got integrated in and Sarah's yours didn't, it's just because Megan had them to us a few days ago. And yours came in late last night or I guess this morning to Lisa, and there just wasn't time to integrate them in.
Well, we had time to look at minutes that were put in an hour and forty-five minutes ago. This seems, oh, you know what, this is not, I'm not gonna have this conversation. It's not productive. It is to the will of the committee and we will take a vote.
Well, and I would just like to clarify that, that that's looking at one thing that was put into Dropbox and each individual member can look at it on their own time. And this would have required Lisa and I, as we had discussed and committed to with the committee, to get together and put these in and figure out where they needed to go in a collaborative way. And I was not capable of doing that today. Megan?
Yeah. I guess first I just want to reiterate that I, like I said in our last meeting, I support the consolidated evaluation, you know, Sarah, that you and Lisa put together. And I know it took a lot of time for you, so I just want to say thank you again to both of you. But I also did suggest that we move a few things around. And I did that not because I didn't think that the summative report was complete, but just because it is our first time, you know, doing this in a number of years and it is Dr. Bucky's first evaluation. I just wanted to show that, that we set the bar high for, for ourselves in terms of clarity. So I did, you know, I submitted two suggested modifications, which are in, you know, as Emily mentioned, are in that updated, which is just in the, you know, just adding two sentences to the summary. But that said, you know, I've had some time to think about this too. And I think I mentioned graduation earlier. But that ceremony was significant for me in a number of ways. You know, obviously we're celebrating the students' achievement and all that they've accomplished, especially under a very challenging year. But it also put things into perspective for me. And as I listened to our senior speakers, their resilience and optimism and positive outlook was inspiring and also refreshing. So it really made me kind of think through this process a little bit more because we can learn a lot from our students. And I think as adults, especially this year, we have a little bit of a tendency to focus on what's not going right and on what's not being done. And we just need to break that cycle because we are in this together. And Dan stated perfectly in his graduation speech, he referenced a quote by David Foster Wallace. And I am paraphrasing, so Dan, I apologize if I'm butchering your quote. But it was basically, you know, the more we list and resent things that were deprived, the more we live in that anger and frustration. And Dan's recommendation to the senior class was to hold and appreciate the positive things that came out of this year because they allow us to move forward. And holding on to the negative really just holds us back. So for that, you know, I do want to kind of take a different approach to this. And Dr. Bucky, I want to thank you for the work you've done this year. This is your first year as a superintendent in Marblehead. And I want you to, to thank you for maintaining a steady hand during what was a chaotic and unprecedented time. So as a district, we have so much opportunity ahead of us. And I look forward to your leadership in accomplishing those goals in the years ahead. And that's really what I want to add to this because I think that point got away from us in our last meeting. And I think that's it. We just have to recognize that we've come a long way in a short period of time. So.
Thanks, Megan. I wholeheartedly agree. I was definitely frustrated after our previous meeting because I felt as though we lost sight of that and that Dr. Bucky has done a very good job in a set of incredibly difficult circumstances and a year that has just really thrown many things up into the air and, and that we're sort of in this process of sort of putting that puzzle all back together. And I think that we have a real opportunity with Dr. Bucky in our district. You know, I think that his leadership at Widger, you know, I know many haven't been able to walk in there as freely as, has been in the past. But you know, it's a much lighter place. People are, seem to be enjoying themselves working in spite of all of the difficult circumstances that they are working under and working to fix and address. And so I think that, you know, when, when Lisa and I were putting this together, you know, that there were, you know, quite a few different opinions on, on the various topics and, or in the various goals that, that we were addressing. And we tried very, very hard to and, or in the various goals that we were addressing, and we tried very, very hard to balance that of what was written in the individual reports. And I think it's important to note, too, that Dr. Bucky, and we all have the individual reports, and Dr. Bucky has read through them all, so he knows each and every one of our comments and knows where this committee stands, and that the summative eval is that compilation of all of them. So we do have a motion, and it's been seconded and discussed. I will move to take a vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
No.
Okay, so that motion passes three to one. All right, that leads us on to subcommittee and liaison updates. Does anybody have anything? Okay.
We had a facilities meeting.
All right, go ahead.
So we had a facilities meeting. Andrew Petty joined us, as well as Stephen Quiatek. Andrew was able to speak to what he can do in way of meeting our need, or meeting our goals for sustainability. This was on the heels of Sustainable Marblehead, joining us the week before. And what we really came up with was what they were asking for was very low-hanging fruit. Andrew Petty and the Board of Health is very willing to partner with us. They're able to provide the receptacles we need for everything. They're willing to pay for the composting at all of our, throughout our district. He'll organize that. It was very exciting news. We talked about getting the water fill stations, and right now, we had thought it was gonna be Bets and Village that just needed them. I sense have gotten a little bit of feedback that the ones at, one of the schools that have them might not be working, but Todd was gonna dig into that and get us account on that, and we'll follow that up. So that was very welcome news, that, and that, you know, Board of Health is willing to be such a partner in that. And then Stephen Quiatek talked to us a little bit about what the infrastructure needs are, going, going forward on a repetitive basis, because those will need to be embedded in our plan as far as like how often we want to update our wireless servers, or, I never have the right terminology on the tech stuff, but he said, you know, that would be every five years. We just want to make sure that this is a very comprehensive plan and that we're accounting for all the various subcategories that, that, you know, are facility implications. The committee has made a lot of progress in coming up with a very comprehensive strategic plan, and we are very pleased to say that we should be able to hand that over and complete by the time we're done with the Planning for Success, so that when there's a bullet for facilities, that we kind of just, we have the work done. We have a timeline over ten years with specific items, what year they need to be done, and what it will cost. So it will help greatly with financial planning. And I just want to thank all the participants of our committee, Michelle, Todd, Dr. Bucky, Emily, Jeff, St. George. We put a lot of time in that this year. We've developed, you know, a great document that will be coming out of it, and I'm proud of the work we've done, and I just want to thank everybody so much for what they've done.
Great, thank you, Sarah, and thank you for all your work on that this year as well. Obviously, some really great things have come out, and it's exciting to see how that's going to, or I guess hopeful maybe is a better word than exciting, but to see how that's going to play into pieces with the Planning for Success and as we really look to move the district forward. Emily, your hand is up. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I don't know if this is gonna come up later, but the Juneteenth. So, okay, then I'm good.
Thanks. All right, I know that, you know, we did meet for reopening, but I know that that was a very operational meeting. So I'm actually, I know that Dr. Bucky has his notes on it that he's going to address in his update, so I will just sort of wait for him to be able to do that, since not much of what was discussed really was, is school committee purview. So that leads us to the building project update. Emily or Sarah, since David isn't here, do you guys want to add anything?
Some things that was mentioned to me today, and I'll follow up with David, was the principals, as a whole, haven't gotten a chance to tour the building yet and are really excited about the new building and everything it brings to our district. And they are, would love, not just, I mean, you know, Sean's seen it and Donna's seen it, but the district principals are really excited about the idea of getting in there and want to get in there. So hopefully, and I'm sure, David's been good about scheduling tours. I'm sure he can, he can get them in there. That's no problem. It's, you know, on schedule, and we had a brief meeting a week or so ago. I'm losing track of time here. I know that, you know, the PTO got a chance to look at it to kind of get a scope of what the organic garden is going to encompass, so that they can, you know, take that torch and carry it, which is great to have Brian on such, as we heard from Donna, amazing program that we do in our schools, and everything's just plugging away.
Wonderful. And there, I know David has a tour set up for next week. Dr. Bucky, maybe you can send that along to the other principals as well, because they absolutely would be more than welcome. All right, thank you, Sarah, for filling those pieces in. Dr. Bucky, that leads us up to the superintendent's report.
Great. I will start with the Planning for Success initiative. I just put in the Dropbox again tonight, that kind of comprehensive overview that I had done for the committee a couple of months back, just to remind people of the process and why we chose this particular model and the facilitation through DESI. And certainly, if anyone wants to dig more deeply into it, the DESI website has actual case studies from districts that have done Planning for Success. We are two-thirds of the way through our meetings. We had the planning team met last week and this week. Prior to that, they were trained in a protocol and went out all across Marblehead and got stakeholder input and brought that back, and then synthesized that. And it's interesting, and I would venture to say, and Megan and Sarah could correct me if I'm wrong, that hundreds of people were granted the opportunity to participate in this Planning for Success, looking to the future of what do you want the Marblehead Public Schools to look like in the year 2026? What do they look like in 2021? And then talking about how we got there. And so you bring all of that stakeholder input back, and these common themes start to emerge. And the great thing for me about Planning for Success and why I'm passionate about this model is no one person's voice, no one particular stakeholder group gets to determine the priorities for the district, that it is the collective will of the community to look at, what are these three to five? And so today, in the meeting, there were two that were just obvious. Every stakeholder group listed those two, so that made it easier. And I have been very purposeful with the facilitator to be very conscious of budget, because I know that's on the forefront of everyone's mind, and some want to invert the process and do the budget piece first, and then talk about what the priorities are. But this is not a one-year plan. This is five years for the Marblehead Public Schools. And as we determine those themes, and I think today we walked away with five potential themes that will become objectives, then you'll have initiatives each year under those, and then budget. And I do think that we will in August, this will impact our budget timeline, which I think is a good thing, to get these strategic initiatives and these action plans in place with dollar figures, so we can communicate that out to the community. But I'm happy to meet with any individual that feels like they still don't have a good handle on Planning for Success. But each time the group gets together, she does an exit survey, and, you know, the overwhelming majority, twenty-five people, twenty-three, twenty-four, are happy with the pace of the project, are understanding. And she's very good about putting forth the people that might not be there, that might have some skepticism, that might have some concerns, and addressing those head-on. So I'm really impressed with our facilitator, the transparency of the process, the pace of the process, which admittedly is aggressive, but I think we have made good progress. It'll go to the leadership team at our retreat in July, and then the full group will get back together in August with something to bring to you, hopefully for the first September meeting. And again, the budget piece of that is in the forefront of everyone's mind. Don't know if committee members, if Sarah or Megan want to jump in and add anything from today. Sarah? Oh, I saw my meeting. I'm sorry, through the chair.
You're part of the meeting, so you may absolutely call on her.
So I just want to highlight, too, much like Dan Howells, we have two students who are on our team. Every single meeting I leave there, just more and more impressed. It's Ariel, and I apologize, I might butcher her last name, Mogalesco, and Benjamin Khan, and they are just, they're amazing. You know, they're, they come as prepared and offer as much as the adults and the professionals in the room, and they're just, it's very impressive. They should be very proud of themselves. And I just wanted to, you know, point out that I'm impressed.
I know Ariel from the SAC, and I know Ben's mom from the SAC as well at the high school. And Ben was a tower kid before he was at the high school, and they are, they're both very, very impressive kids. I completely agree. I've been, not to kind of take a sidetrack, but I've been so impressed by all the students that we've had contact with in various committees this year.
Yeah, absolutely. So I just want to kind of stress what John said about consistent themes, because they really are. We haven't seen any outliers, like all the feedback that came back. You know, maybe there's some different terminology, and we can group them a little bit differently, but it is consistent across the board, which is a good thing, I think. So I just want to make that point, just, you know, for the committee members and for the, you know, people in the community, that that has been very obvious, which, so that's a good thing. The other thing, and this is hard for me too, is that I want this to move faster. However, the process, every time we get together with the facilitator, she takes us through very thoughtful steps, and we leave there making significant progress. And, you know, I worry, I worry about the budget piece too, and how we're gonna get there. And today was kind of the aha moment for me, because we really dug deep through a root cause analysis, and you get to those causes, and then you can see, okay, this is how we're going to take steps forward. So it's hard to, for me to say this too, but we have to kind of trust the process. And the process, you know, I'm seeing, and obviously Ruth has done this now, I think she said like seven or eight times, including as a superintendent herself, but I can see really the value in the process.
I'll just offer that she has done it seven or eight times, and she has said that, you know, some districts are, you know, the themes are consistent, but Marblehead had a theme emerge today. She said, "I've never seen." She said, "So I know that that's important to your community, and specific to Marblehead." And so that also gives me comfort, that this is not a cookie cutter process, not your dad's strategic planning effort, but very tailored to our district, and I think the outcomes are gonna be very, very positive for the future.
Wonderful, very exciting.
Do I have other things? The reopening committee had its final meeting, and mask updates was on the agenda, which changed as of yesterday. The commissioner did have a call yesterday and said that masks ended with the school year as a mandate, but they highly recommend them for summer school, but have left that to a district determined to take, I said this to the group this morning, take the temperature in your district, no pun intended. And I think people are certainly welcome to wear masks, but we will follow the DESI guidance and end that with the school year and recommend them for summer, but not mandate them.
So we'll bring that, per our policy, we can bring that language change to our hopefully quick meeting that is next week. And per the policy, it allows for that to take place now, given your guidance from DESI.
I certainly appreciate that flexibility, because not being able to make those pivots as the department does and needing to call a meeting, certainly, we will formally vote it, but having the meeting yesterday and being able to put it in practice today, I find it is very helpful operationally.
Great, thanks, John. Did you want to give anything else on the reopening committee?
We talked about the follow-up vaccination clinic that will happen next Wednesday. The survey, the social emotional health survey that went out on the last day of school. Each principal updated on kind of the hot days that we had had in the district and their end-of-year activities. We talked about some summer services. There was a Metgo update. And Helene, as the Board of Health representative, gave an update from the Mental Health Task Force.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so that will then lead us, do you want to hand it to Dr. Oxford first?
Please.
All right, Dr. Oxford, you are up, and I believe because of some of the tech concerns we had this evening, that I'm gonna be the one to share my screen. So let me, I've got that up, let me just do that, and then let me know when you want me to click forward. Can everyone see that?
Perfect. All right, thank you so much. Good to see you all. Happy almost summer. Thank you all for your support throughout the year, certainly. Don't need to echo all of those sentiments, but I certainly appreciate your support and your accountability and helping us get through this year. So as, as Dr. Bucky mentioned, as I appreciate the shout-out, Dr. Solberg during public comment, I just want to briefly walk the committee through really next steps with regards to our department, the Department of Student Services here in Marblehead, really just kind of outline and reflect the, you know, in a sense, a five-year improvement plan, if you will, that certainly will align with the work that's already begun and been done in Planning for Success with regards to our department. So as, as Dr. Solberg mentioned in public comment, we, in collaboration with CPAC, were able to spend about an hour on these slides on this topic about a month ago. I will not take even close to an hour today, I promise. But with that said, if there are any, certainly if there are any follow-up questions, you know, outside of this meeting, and that video, that session was recorded with CPAC, certainly happy to share out that document as well, or excuse me, that video as well. So tonight, again, I just wanted to just quickly outline just some recent accomplishments over the past two years, the years that I've been in the director role, just to kind of highlight where we've gone and what we've accomplished so far. Just walk through a little bit, you know, why, why we're shooting for an improvement plan and really trying to formalize that, outline four priority areas that we've really identified within our department to focus on over the next several years, and then just talk through the next immediate steps with regards to our, to our planning and our work. If you can, go ahead. Not gonna read all of these, but I just wanted to highlight a series of accomplishments that even in this global pandemic, and frankly, as a result of the pandemic in a lot of ways, that I think a lot of us can, can reflect on. We, as a department, have really been able to accomplish a lot of things. We've been able to begin and lead new initiatives within the district. So really proud of the work of our whole district, but certainly our department as well. So why? I've been asked that, you know, a few times this year, as we've walked through this work and worked together within our department, why are we really gonna focus and target improvement plan? To me, I'm a strategic planner, I think by trade, and I think that it's, it's pretty straightforward for me, but it's really to drive our work. And as I mentioned, the pandemic has highlighted, you know, a lot of areas of excellence, but as well as a lot of areas of needed holistic support within our department and how that applies and is integrated within the district and community initiatives. We certainly need to ensure that we're aligned in our work, our roles, responsibilities, our expectations and values. Just, you know, there's a lot of misalignment within our department with regards to those, those areas, so we need to focus on alignment. Certainly, efficiency and effectiveness with regards to budget, resources, staffing. So we need to focus on alignment, certainly efficiency and effectiveness with regards to budget, resources, staffing, responsibilities and how that portrays the work that we do for our students. We want to obviously, of course, focus and drive our decisions and then really importantly, keeping ourselves accountable, making sure that we have a system in place to hold ourselves accountable, to be able to, to self-assess the work that we're doing, the progress we're making as a department. All right, so, well, I'm glad that actually these numbers all ended up 1111, because I don't think that there are, there's not necessarily one that's most important. I think these four priority areas are equally important and add equal layers of value with regards to the areas of improvement within our department. So I'm just going to walk through these in the next few slides to, to provide a little bit more detail of where we're going and things of that nature. You can go ahead, Sarah. So priority one is really the, the most broad goal area or priority area that we need to identify and work through as a, as a full department. And I really mean that, that includes all of our staff, looking at the, the prior traditions, history, success levels of our students with disabilities, our, our English language learners and things of that nature and, and our staff and for our community as well. You know, and really helping the community to understand what is the Department of Student Services. And just, just quickly, I've used this example a few times this year to, to kind of give you my personal take on, on why this became, you know, our first area, if you will, of, of redefining the department is, I was in a meeting talking about the Department of Student Services and, and I kept reflecting on, on special education only. And Emily Dean, our assistant director, turned to me, she called me out in the, in the middle of a meeting and said, we're not just special education. And I appreciated that, you know, I, I do appreciate being called out and it's, it really helped me to reflect on ensuring that we are umbrella, our Department of Student Services embraces and prioritizes and promotes all the work that we do. So in addition to the branch of special education, the Department of Student Services does oversee and supervise and support our English language learners, the educational stability aspects for our students who are identified as homeless in foster care or in DCF custody. And then various aspects of civil rights, including all of those titles listed, six, seven and nine, as well as diversity, equity, inclusion through that lens of civil rights and really making sure that the accessibility and from, from really that, that human rights standpoint, all students are, are feeling included and a sense of belonging within our district. All right, so the second priority area is a, is a focus on culturally responsive competency. Certainly in, in partnership, and I want to give a well-deserved shout out as she gets a lot, but, but she deserves unlimited praises, is the work that, that Nan Murphy has begun around diversity, equity and inclusion and anti-bias work and cultural proficiency. And Nan and I have really, I think, developed a strong working relate, relationship and partnership that's going to continue to lead our work together. But through our, or under our umbrella, through our strand of student services, targeting areas under, within cultural competency. Examples such as disproportionality for students identified as being disabled or identified as needing an IEP. Unfortunately, it's an unfortunate statistic in Marblehead, students identified or coded in Aspen as, as identifying as African-American. Thirty-eight percent of them in our district have qualified for an IEP or have been found to have a disability. Our district average, we're right around 20%, so we're almost double the amount of our African-American population is identified for an IEP. There's something wrong there, frankly, and we need to explore why. And we need to educate ourselves and have those brave conversations as to, to why are we identifying, over identifying students of color, various subgroups and seeing them as quote unquote disabled. From a hiring and retention standpoint, again, this is district-wide, but certainly within our department, we want to make sure that we are finding ways to target, recruit and retain staff of color and really make sure that our, our staff, our representative are of our student demographic and things of that nature. And then partnering across the district, as I mentioned with Nan and other subsets, certainly at the building level as well, making sure that, that we are supporting and embracing, empowering our leaders, our teachers and our students to engage in those tough, brave conversations. We had really, really thoughtful conversation today, at least in my subgroup in the Planning for Success Committee around that. And really embracing a culture and promoting a culture of having those tough, brave conversations. And again, having that integration of culturally responsive practices, experiences and voices as we continue to, to expand our, our inclusive mindset here in Marblehead. Go ahead, Sarah. Third priority area should be a no-brainer, I think probably for all of us, is just continuing to maximize inclusive, inclusive opportunities. I think as a whole in Marblehead, you know, collectively, that, that is our mindset. I think for the vast majority of us within this community is that we want to continue to, to prioritize and maximize those inclusive opportunities. That's a philosophy and that's great. That's theoretical and that's great, but what does that look like in practice? So, and I'll get to this in a minute. I do want to, you know, outline a couple of target areas and action items that we're going to, steps that we're going to take as a department to continue to foster that development of inclusion for all students. But just through the lens of, of ensuring that all students are set up for success. A member at our Planning for Success Committee said it, I think perfectly today and said that when, when a child walks through the doors of whatever school they started in Marblehead, the mindset needs to be, without any exception, that that child will succeed regardless of disability, race, ethnicity, it does not matter, that child will succeed no matter what. So how do we ensure that in that fully inclusive environment, that child is going to be set up for success? Research beyond research, including a few years ago, the Department of Education did a very extensive set of research that really promoted this idea of inclusion. And that, that middle box there where it says placement matters, it really, it really highlights that, that data, that if with students with disabilities, if they are found enrolled in, in with their peers in general education settings, they're five times more likely to graduate earlier on time. So we got to continue to just push, push that expectation to become the norm. And the last thing I'll say on that is you don't have to go back, but it's okay. But the last thing I'll say on that is that we need to ensure that we continue to provide that differentiated instruction and accommodations that benefit, benefit all of our learners within that inclusive setting. It's not about the label, it's not about the placement, it's, it's just about seeing kids as kids. So before I get to, to number four, there's a couple of slides I just want to walk through and because I think it's really important to think about, all right, well, how do we do this? What's the first step to really breaking down some silos, some unintended, I, I believe, silos between general education, special education that certainly have been built up over the years. It's, it's been a lot of years for those to happen and we got to start breaking those down more and more. So within special education, our programs, we got a lot of acronyms in Marblehead for special education. We have a lot, we have tides, access, language-based academic skills. We had sales, we have bridges, TLC, the list goes on. I will not bore you with all of them. This has been the hottest topic, I think, this year, as I've begun to and continue to preach the good word with regards to our levels of improvement. But on students' IEP placement pages, those placement program names are going to go away. Because it, we need to shift the mindset of how we see our students with disabilities, not as program kids, not as a tides kid, a language-based kid, but this is a kid, this is a child who requires some additional services and that's okay. And that's a good thing. And that, that tides kid, that child that just really needs a little bit of extra therapeutic support, social emotional support, we can provide that and that's no problem at all. And whether the IEP drives that or not, we're going to really work hard to make sure all those structures are in place. From a staff-facing standpoint within our department, nothing changes, nothing changes. Because we want to maintain those language-based methodologies, we want to maintain those therapeutic supports, those ABA, Applied Behavioral Analysis, that, that training, those levels of experience. So nothing's changing on staff-facing side. We want those structures to be there and empower our teachers to expand their reach, if you will, to make sure that they are, are seen as the experts in their buildings to provide those, those recommendations to their Gen Ed colleagues, right? To make sure that from a therapeutic standpoint, from a language-based standpoint, here's some awesome ideas that we can integrate. We can be fully inclusive and make sure that those students, students with disabilities or, or maybe students that haven't been identified yet for an IEP are able to access those accommodations and resources and stay with their peers in that fully inclusive environment. So that's a big one, because a lot of, I've heard, I've heard a lot of feedback, I've had a lot of questions. Are all the programs going away? Is every kid going to be, you know, fully included all the time? That's the hope, that would be the ideal. It's not going to be perfect and those staff-facing structures are not going to go away. But the IEP will drive what services are appropriate in hopefully the least restrictive environment first, coming down to more restrictive as needed. Really, the next step is, is, and again, Nan and I, I think we're really excited, beginning to get our, our principals, our leadership team on board, starting this summer is embracing as a district, the MTSS framework, multi-tiered systems of support. I'll get into this just for a minute in, in a second, but we have a consultant, Dr. Katie Novak, coming in this summer to, to norm some language and expectations for our entire district. And we're going to carry that professional development with Dr. Novak, with our entire staff to really target and focus some meaningful professional development on universal accommodations and resources for all students. We've already begun, we're almost done with updating and prioritizing our district curriculum accommodation plan or our D cap, which again outlines recommended, suggested, universal accommodations for all students. Other ideas, or excuse me, other opportunities, really working and making sure that families, community members are, are in it, are understanding kind of what we're doing. Presentations like this, right? Really being transparent and making sure that parents, especially parents of students that maybe have identified to have begun to struggle a little bit. What's the next step? What's the process? How can we as a district support that child? It doesn't mean special education is the answer all the time. And frankly, it should not be until other proactive accommodations, interventions are put into place first and attempted to maintain and maximize that inclusive and least restrictive environment and opportunities. You can go ahead, Sarah. So quickly, MTSS might be a new acronym. We love them in education, but to some of you, I'll try to make it as simple as possible. A lot of you may have heard of RTI, Response to Intervention, previously it's been around for a long time. I'm sure you've heard of PBIS, we're a PBIS district. MTSS kind of umbrellas, both of them, it marries RTI from an academic tiered intervention approach and that social emotional tiered intervention approach through PBIS with really a focus on students, staff and parents or families. And with regards to supporting and embracing a proactive tiered system, tiered intervention of supports. I could go on forever because I borderline obsessed with this approach and I'm super excited about it, but I will not for today, for tonight. So you can go ahead, Sarah. Finally, the fourth priority is, is within especially our branch of special education under the Department of Student Services, is to make sure that we're using data with fidelity through our eligibility processes, through our progress monitoring, making sure that students' current performance levels and levels and rate of progress are really being tracked with fidelity, with integrity to inform appropriate interventions and supports. There's a lot of great practices going on in this district. It's another example unfortunately of things seen a little bit differently in, in different buildings. So we've already begun a lot of that work of how to align district-wide approaches within our department, within supporting students with disabilities through their IEP to make sure that that IEP is a very thoughtful and meaningful document to ensure, ensure success for all of our students with disabilities who require an IEP. Go ahead, Sarah. So where do we go next? Or where do we go first? Right? What's the immediate next steps? So we have a working document, a working draft right now of a close to 20-page, five-year department improvement plan. Over the last two years that I've served in this role as director, I've, I've tried my best in, in working with our team chairs as well to really gain as much feedback from community members, from certainly our partnership through CPAC and with parents, as well as our colleagues, our teachers, our tutors, support staff, paraprofessionals and service providers with regards to what are their concerns? What, what do they see as areas of improvement and really have dug into these things? So progressive, Dr. Solberg, in your public comment, not sure, I think it's really collective. I'm just kind of explaining kind of, you know, where, where our department's going to go. But all of that feedback, all of that input, all that information and learning has come from our department staff and our, and frankly, our district leaders as well. We need to embrace these priority areas throughout the district, as I mentioned, partnering with, with Nan and the Office of Teaching and Learning through our summer leadership retreats this summer, beginning again with this work to norm expectations and language to adopt that inclusive mindset. Want to make sure that we collaborate with district and community members. We're really focusing on putting together a structured parent education model through informational videos, course kind of module type information, so that again, if parents are feeling like, oh my gosh, my child's beginning to struggle, what's the next step? Certainly reach out to us, but there's other, there's going to be other means of education as well to make sure that parents, if they need to attend an IP meeting, right? If eligibility is on the table for special education, they can walk into those meetings with confidence. There's, because it can be a daunting and overwhelming task. So we want to make sure that that transparency and communication is at the forefront of our mind. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, we want to ensure that, that we as a department are maintaining accountability and a self-assessment with our own work and, and checking these action items on an annual basis and moving forward. So we can go to the last slide, which I think is an obvious for all of us. Teamwork makes a dream work. We got to work together. I'm really proud of, of what we have built within our department. Shout out goes to everyone, y'all know who you are, um, with regards to the work that we've done and really begun to, to, to bring that collaborative and transparent approach within our department. So that's it. I didn't time myself, but it was much shorter, I think, than the 45 minutes before. So thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Much shorter than 45 minutes, yes, you are correct. Thank you, Eric. That was great. And I will add the full presentation to my list of summer things to catch up on. So I appreciate you coming in and giving us a brief overview this evening. Sarah Fox, I see your hand up.
Thank you so much, Eric. I know a lot of work has gone into this and that it's been a team approach. Do you have a timeline to when you think you might have budget drivers to kind of implement this plan? So that we, we include those as best as possible moving forward?
Yeah, I, you know, I was glad to hear this morning and then tonight, you know, Sarah, that you within the facility subcommittee have kind of worked through that strategic planning process. I feel like we did that a little bit too. And, and so when Planning for Success is ready, I already told Dr. Buck, I said, I, I got a good amount, I think, that we've already begun to accomplish. So, but parts of those certainly were the budget drivers. And, you know, I think, I mean, I may be in the minority, maybe I'm not, but, but I've, I've put a lot of responsibility on our team chairs to really dig in and, and, you know, and I know that term needs-based budget gets thrown around. I think special education, student services by definition should be needs-based, right? Because it's only, it's the, the, the budget happens based on what those kids truly need. And there's variability there, but I don't want to say we're bare bones. And I think that's my point, is that we have to ensure that we're being super efficient and effective, but it's not just within our department. That's with a collaboration with principals that has, is there now. You know, and really looking at scheduling, structuring and mindset to drive staffing, to drive budget resources, resource needs and things like that. So I feel very confident that when, you know, as we work through certainly the summer, but, but absolutely the fall, you know, we begin budget planning for FY23, we'll be in a really good position, you know, to be thoughtful about this work.
That's great to hear, Eric, because it's true in student services where it should be so needs-driven. It's really hard for that carryover budget because you don't know from year to year if your, if your, your needs are reflective in your past or even next year. So it's really important that we take it, you know, what do you need this year, not, you know, the carryover. And I'm super happy to hear that that's your approach. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Sarah. Megan, I saw your hand up first and then Emily saw yours.
So Eric, thanks for doing this presentation for us. I just want to say as a former CPAC member, this is what we've been advocating for years to see. So a fully inclusive district, using data to drive decisions and consistency across the district as well as working more collaboratively with parents and educating and empowering them so that they can make the best decisions for their children and be part of the team as well. So I'm just so happy to see this coming to fruition. I've said this to you before, but I think it bears saying in this, you know, to the full committee too, is that you have completely changed, you and your team have changed the culture for the better in this district. And as a parent, I see it and I feel it too, just going into those IEP meetings and reevaluation meetings for my own child. It's a 180 from where it was, you know, even five years ago. So this is really exciting to see it start to move forward and I just want to thank you for that.
Thanks, Megan. That means a lot. As I've told you in the past, it's definitely, I'm not taking any Thanks, Megan. That means a lot. As I've told you in the past, it's definitely, I'm not taking anywhere close to all the credit, but it really means a lot. And on behalf of our department, we're, we're really excited about where we're at and where we're going. So thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Emily?
Yeah, so just some thoughts that I had when you presented this. First of all, I'm so impressed by. What's happening in the district under. This new. Department of Student Services, which I love that it now encompasses. All those three are those three pieces that you said. I think there were three, right? Just make sure I have all my facts right. That I think that is great. And then just like. Three points that came out that make me like. It's just nice to see that this is actually happening and starting to evolve. The shifting of the mindset on how we see kids. Just seeing that in there is so important of not, you know, labeling children and like you said, getting rid of all the. Acronyms and just seeing kids as kids. I mean, that is what. I feel like, you know, we need, we've been trying to say and do that. And then to see it in this plan is, it just was really, it was great. And then the proactive intervention first. I guess a lot of this is coming from personal experiences. So to see that this is happening in like a, a real plan is just from my. Experiences in the past, I'm just happy that people will have this. These great opportunities going forward. And then educating families on how to go about this process because as someone who had no idea. And it's like you said, scary and daunting to go into IEP meetings and not know what to expect and not know the process. Like having that laid out for our families is going to be so huge. And I'm just so happy that. We've are doing this. And so thank you. And yeah, sorry.
No, thank you, Emily. I really appreciate that. I, you know, I just want, I do want to, you know. Mention because I, it's, it's worth a lot in my opinion is that. A lot of what I've outlined tonight, I didn't say this is, is happening. But there's a lot going on that's going, that's going really well in Marblehead. We're just not either, we're not seeing it holistically, right? And so we just got to continue to work on that alignment within that. And so. But to your point, Emily, yeah, we're, we're, there's a lot that, that we can continue to improve on. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Eric. Again, that was a wonderful snapshot into everything that's going on from your angle of student achievement in this district. And we appreciate you coming and speaking to us tonight.
Thank you.
We'll definitely have you back. All right, Nan, that leads us to you. We're going to hope that we can work out the audio pieces for Nan. So I will share my screen. And I'm going to turn my volume. I'm going to mute myself.
Nan, you've been muted this whole time.
How about now, Sarah? Can you hear me now? Great. All right. So to start off this evening, I'd like to, no teaching and learning update would be complete without starting with. Complementing our, our teaching staff and our students. I was talking with the superintendent as we were visiting schools in the last few weeks. And even on the last day of school, we were just. In impressed and in awe of our teachers. Teaching right up to the last minute. There was not a wasted moment, whether you were doing a closing circle or some sort of. Synthesizing activity of the year. I was in a social studies lesson, walking around a life sized map. It was just really thoughtful use of time and I was just beyond impressed. With the, the fortitude of our teachers and this resilience of our, of our students still engaged up to the very last moment in time. So. I want to thank our, our teaching staff and our students and our families for enduring a very difficult year in terms of academics and social emotional health and wellbeing and. The partnership and that it, that developed in the district through that work. All the teachers. Common theme in talking with teachers at the end of the year was I've never felt closer to a class in my entire career. Or their families. And so, you know, along the continuum of looking at what we've done well. I can, I can confidently say our relationships are stronger with students and families and, and with our teaching staff. So I, I'm going to go rather quickly through some of the work that's been happening in the Office of Teaching and Learning. Before I do, I want to thank our, our teaching and learning committees that really. Got the, got the train on the tracks last summer. It was that work. We had 28. Staff members, community members, school committee members, leadership team members. All coming together and through the year, we have worked collaboratively to. Pivot and change models of instruction to track time on learning and to. Look at pacing, look at assessments and really ensure that we were doing the right thing by, by students. And so I want to, I really want to recognize those, those committees that came together to do that work with us. It was really in November, early December where the work started to shift a little bit away from the models of instruction and really got into. Some of the more critical components of curriculum development and alignment. And so through that work, three themes kind of popped up to the surface this year, our first year together at Marblehead. The curriculum piece, the diversity, equity and inclusion piece, and then the, the need for professional development in the district. And before I go in and kind of demonstrate to you the work that's been happening around curriculum and alignment. I want to recognize Rebecca Brand, who is our district literacy specialist. She is a phenomenal resource to me and to teachers in the district and. And none of what I'm about to show you would have come together so efficiently without her support and involvement. So. Sarah, I think we can move on. So one of the first things we did in the, in the early fall. Was identify that we did not have a structured read, writing program. In our K to five programming. So we researched and both Rebecca and I and many teachers at the elementary level did have experience with the Lucy Cockens units of studies in writing. And so we, we used allocated grant funding to support the purchase. So every teacher now has their own unit. And with that work came targeted professional development. So an outside provider came in. Introduced the units. We had teachers committing to piloting only one unit. So it wasn't something they had to do with fidelity throughout this year. They just dipped their toe in and provided with the professional development, piloted one writing unit. And I think. Through, if you were visiting schools or seeing work come out of the backpack, I'm sure you saw some, some wonderful. Opinion writing in particular, coming home from students. Next year, we are going to wrap our sixth grade into that writing program and then we'll have a, a fully aligned writing program K through six. The next thing that, that surfaced was we have just completed a successful math adoption. We have brought in a new K to six math program and a new seven to eight math program. The program selected by our committee members is Learn Zillion at the elementary level. And Ready Math at our secondary level. They are both problem based programs, which means they. Are problem forward and students are actively engaged out of the gate in instruction with problem solving. As opposed to being methodically taught a strategy or an approach. There are many different ways to answer math problems. And so this is a more developmentally challenged. Challenging and rigorous. Way of, of approaching the mathematical standards. And we went with the two different programs because K six really gravitated to the resources that Learn Zillion provided. And felt they were developmentally appropriate and same with seven, eight. Also the opportunity to bring a new math specialist on board. We felt that having a K to five and a six. At through eight program would make it difficult to do some coaching at the village school. We wanted that to be really successful. So we're thrilled and I think we have already had our first professional development, which was the afternoon after the early release of students, which I. Fully admitted to staff when we all entered into the Zoom was not ideal. As a teacher for 16 years, the last thing I really wanted to do was attend a PD on the last day of school. But the Marblehole Marblehead team came together and I got a lot of positive feedback from teachers. And it with excitement and looking forward to bringing this program alive in the fall. So as we, as I began to unpack and talk with teachers and principals about resources that are in the building and assessment resources that they use to measure data. To measure student growth and progress. I, I went to, to look for what is customarily referred to as the scope of in sequence in a district. And came to realize that we didn't have one in Marblehead. So Rebecca and I in collaboration with teachers have developed a K to six scope and sequence. And we have on our summer agenda to complete the work with a seven through 12 scope and sequence. So if you look at this visual, you see all the different grade levels. Aligning their independent work to the common core and to the Massachusetts state's frameworks and all moving in the same direction. So in the next slide, you'll get a visual of what that work looks like. This is our Marblehead curriculum calendar. So this breaks it down by grade level, by week. By content. So you're able to, if you're a kindergarten teacher, you're able to look at your curriculum map and understand where you're supposed to be in phonics. What content you'll be covering in reading, writing, math, science and social studies. If you head into the next slide, it's a, I zoomed in a little closer. So this is what it looks like at one particular grade level. So you'll know exactly the content for phonics. You'll know what your unit of study is in writing. What your unit, this is this Rebecca did a quick turnaround after she got the pacing guide from our Learn Zillion and embedded the content for the math. Concepts, the science concepts and the social studies concepts. So as we begin to build out our curriculum map, next on our agenda will be where do assessments fall? So where do we have the common assessments and where do we provide teachers the opportunity for conversations? Around how kids are doing and what they need. In addition to what we're providing in the, in the classroom. And so that gets back to the partnership with our. Student support team, you know, where, where does that multi-tiered systems of support that tiered instruction happen? That tiered instructional opportunity happen within the core. So that's not somewhere the kids are going for additional support. We are going to be providing our teachers the professional development so that when they look at these data points, they know what they need to do differently. For kids in the classroom. So this is the example for four through six and it will look exactly like this for seven through 12. The other thing we have done, and again, in collaboration with all of our classroom teachers, we are going to be transitioning as a district to a standards based report card. So some of the things on the current Marblehead. Report card are outdated, maybe are no longer covered due to frameworks shifts and changes. So we have taken the language around what is happening in literacy, what that grade level standard is. And then we'll be using the indicators of academic performance to give teacher, to give parents an understanding of really. What the concept is and how their student is doing with that individual concept. Another area of targeted area is the work that's happening around diversity, equity and inclusion. We have developed a district rides team and rides is an acronym for reimagining integration, diverse and equitable schools. That team consists of school leadership. Three freshmen from the high school and other members of our. Teaching staff. And we're working together at some of the stages in the visual there. And the ultimate goal is to develop a plan, including a mission statement. Outlining what we stand for and what our priorities are as a district as they relate to diversity, equity and inclusion. Some additional work that's being supported by the Office of Teaching and Learning. For the first time in a long time, the English department at the high school is going to be looking at their curriculum through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion. And some of the texts that are just classic texts that are used because they're classics, classic texts. Are going to be reevaluated and see if there's more current diverse storytelling, diverse authors. The, and more applicable, teachable material that we can foster those conversations through in, in content and during content instruction. So. There's a, that department will be working to collaboratively over the summer to review their curriculum and adopt and select and order new texts. I've also been able to establish a diversity, equity and inclusion lead teacher position. And Maggie Dobin is working with me in establishing a really thoughtful plan of how we. Bring professional learning to our adults at the elementary level and secondary level and how. Through the, through grant funded in the past, elementary schools had, some elementary schools have, each classroom has a book bin of. Diverse text. And so. Maggie and I've worked together to ensure every classroom across the district, K to three. And then eventually four through six will all have an opportunity to have these books in their classrooms. And Maggie is going to then provide the teachers the conversational. Professional development around how do you use these texts in your instruction as anchor text for literacy? And be able to invoke and support really rich conversation with kids. The high school is also going to be bringing in Henry Turner, who is a Marblehead. Member of the community. He's going to be coming in and doing some targeted professional development with our high school team. And Indid Lee is going to be coming in and supporting our elementary. Team and especially the rides team and helping us build out our plan for the district. So that's the, the K to three text alignment and related PD that Maggie is doing and. Also just working really closely with Eric in supporting the social, emotional needs and the concept and. New culture and the way of thinking around multi-tiered systems of support being for all kids all the time. This is an example of professional development and the way we're kind of leading and organizing for next year. Just shared this recently with our building principals. Our staff has the opportunity to meet together three times a month for one hour after their contractual day. So the first in blue, you'll see based on the code, it's a school based faculty meeting. And then we're going to start kind of thinking and purposely planning where what fits. For teachers to be collaborating around. So you'll see the diversity, equity, inclusion is reflected in the Vets professional development in the high school. On September 22nd, whereas pre K through six is going to be getting. Some targeted review around the new writing curriculum. And so that, that picture there, the gray is the district. And so that, that picture there, the gray is the district alignment of multi-tiered systems of support. And that we go a little bit deeper into that in October. You can see we're already the October 12th, which is our full PD day. The full morning, all schools will be engaged in our diversity, equity, inclusion professional development. And then a different agenda in the afternoons depending on your schools. So that's just a sample. It may vary after conversations with leaders about content. But that's an example of what professional development calendar will look like for the after-school time for staff. And then finally, what we've got coming this summer for kids, we've been working at ensuring that we have good summer learning opportunities for students. And so at the elementary, we have, will be targeting our first, second, third, and fourth incoming students. The program will be from July 6th through August 12th. They will have targeted literacy instruction in the morning. We are looking at our students using data for students that are at-risk readers at this point. And we'll be doing some work with them in the morning and then they'll be going through a partnership we have with the YMCA. They'll be going there in the afternoons for some fun in the sun. And our commuting students, all students in that commute to Marblehead will have an opportunity for small group and one-to-one remote tutoring opportunities. So we have a stipend professional setting up that, that work and connecting with those families and setting up a schedule for those children. Our marble, our middle school students under the direction of Matt Fox. They're starting to explore what the Department of Education is promoting as an acceleration academy. They're very strategic as far as what grade levels get access to this funding. And currently Matt is looking at his rising eighth graders to do a week-long math program. That's in the beginning stages, still working on getting students committed and doing, looking at some hiring. The high school, all grades, July 12th through August 12th, four days a week. Students will have an opportunity to come in and get some support in subject areas that they're maybe had some struggles in. And the enrollment process will be through invitation of the guidance department and the administrative staff. So that's kind of what we've got on tap for the summer. In addition to some great professional development working groups that teachers have been, will be stipended to work together in. So that there's, there's a lot here and I'm hoping in the fall we'll go a little bit deeper. I'd like to invite back the math committee and have them present the process and, and be able to talk to you about the materials once they've been using them and teaching with them. So there we go.
Thank you, Nan. That was fantastic. It's, it's hard to believe that all of this work has gone on with everything else with COVID this year. So that's just, I'm blown away. Questions, comments? Megan?
So thanks, Nan. There's a lot in your presentation. Just a couple of quick questions around the math curriculum. Can you talk through that a little bit more in terms of the implementation? I mean, is that ready to go day one? It's going to be, that's the new math curriculum?
Yes. So that will be ready to go. As I said, they, the teachers had their first PD. It's regarding the platform. The presenters took them through the teacher manuals, the, the various ways for our non-readers and the young, young group. They taught, they showed our teachers how you can add your own voice to slides and to homework assignments so that you can read the assignments to students that you know are going to be struggling with the literacy component to be able to get to the math. So a lot has already been launched. That being said, the two days in August that we have been granted for professional development will, both afternoons will be spent with our elementary teachers getting further, deeper professional development and our seventh and eighth grade teachers as well. And then there'll be another component later in the year where they come in. I, we purchased a four series professional development package. And so that will be ongoing. And also another thing that I neglected to mention is that for the first time, all the K through four teachers in developing a schedule with Dr. Oxford, we've been able to develop elementary school schedules where all of the teachers will be off at the same time. So they will have a common planning time. So we will use that common planning time with our math specialist and our literacy specialist to unpack lessons, to sort through materials and to look at student work. So that it's, it will be an ongoing process that they'll be supported in.
That's awesome. The literary literacy piece is key, I think, for the, for the math, especially for the earlier years. So the, the same thing for the Lucy Calkins for the reading. Is that ready to go? Fall too, or is there still more work to be done? I know you said you had people piloting, so.
We're ready to go. We've, we've, the teachers all have their materials. They've been ordered. They've had. Some teachers have been doing it already. You know, they've already been, they, they went well beyond the one piloting one lesson. And that's to, that also, I was actually on my ride in this morning, talking to the PD provider, trying to secure him for September to come back and to talk about, you know, launching literacy and launching writing and what does that look like? And what do we need to remember? Because, you know, it was a long time ago and we were in a pandemic when they went through the PD. So what do they need to know again? How do they need to be supported? So that, that will definitely be happening as well as Rebecca Brand, again, phenomenal resource. She'll be working with our literacy, two new literacy specialists and, and working with, developing a coaching model. That's one of our goals for the summers. What, what do those three resource individuals do for teachers? And how do they move this curriculum, these new pieces of curriculum forward?
That's awesome, Nan. I mean, I have to agree with Sarah, the amount of work that you've done above and beyond just, you know, the normal pieces and COVID is really amazing. I completely agree about Rebecca Brand. I've gotten to work with her through the IEP Improvement Project and she's just an amazing resource and so knowledgeable and energized and enthusiastic. So that's, so that's great. I would suggest going forward, you know, once we get into the fall and to a little bit more of a regular schedule, that maybe we get some more, more consistent updates on our calendar because there's obviously so much movement that it'd be great to, you know, have that scheduled in to get our updates from Nan.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dan.
Sarah?
First, I just wanted to clarify, the Lucy Calkins program isn't new to our district. We've been utilizing that in the kindergarten curriculum with our kindergarten teachers for a few years now. It's been a really successful program that we've, we've, I'm glad, glad to see that we're expanding it beyond that. But it's shown really good results. It's been a great program. But then the other, the other pieces, I was so happy to see you were utilizing Henry Turner for some PD. It's a great way to bring, I don't know how ever many of you may, may or may not follow him. But he's a resident in Marblehead and it's a great way to use, you know, I would say exceptional resources in our community to, you know, bring us further along. He does great work at Newton North, from what I'm seeing from following him. You know, with really implementing actionable pieces for inclusion and diversity and bringing it to the students in ways that they understand and that, that really that they can make a difference, you know, versus sometimes we look at these big, big ideas that aren't as actionable at, you know, in small pieces. Really, really excited to see that you brought him in because I think he's a great resource. And, you know, we heard today, people want to utilize our staff, our community members and, you know, draw benefit from what we have right here. So I think that's great. Thank you.
Emily?
I just wanted to, oh, well, very, very. Sorry, sorry about that. Like I had the same thoughts as Sarah Gold that I was just, this was like absolutely amazing and blown away by what you presented to us tonight and what, and just being here for such a short time through this crazy year that you were able to do all this analysis on our district and find all these pieces that needed to be fixed. And it created this, the plan, like that mapping of the curriculum. I mean, that's amazing. As someone who likes things like that, I was studying it to be like, wow, this is but you've, you know, really took everything and I don't know, it was amazing. So thank you, Nan. We are lucky to have you here to help us.
Sorry, can I just add one thing? The, the curriculum and diversity, equity, inclusion are two themes that have come through in the planning for success piece too. So, you know, again, when I think about kind of going through the process and, you know, some of this work is already happening. It's not like we have to wait until the end of planning for success to start moving things forward and really plan for next year and, and beyond. So it's great to see this work already underway.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Nan. This is really, you know, I'll look forward to as we sort of move into next year and you can come and update us a little bit more in-depth on some of these things and, and just keep us filled in. Because again, like I said to Eric, you know, this is an amazing piece to see as, as student achievement sort of, you know, as we, as we kind of look broadly at that entire concept. So thank you. Thanks for all the hard work. All right, John, I think that's up for the superintendent's update, correct?
It is, but through the chair, I'd just like to say that, you know, I think Megan teed it up very nicely that you can look at this year through a deficit lens of things that didn't happen. But I think hearing Dr. Oxford and Nan Murphy tonight, you see the overwhelming amount of work that was done and the accomplishments of this district. And Nan gives shout out to Rebecca Brand. I'm going to give a shout out to Nan. There was a lot of work to do and she did a lot of work. And so you just got to see a sampling of it this evening. And I agree, Megan, having regular Office of Teaching and Learning updates would be helpful for the committee because the diversity, equity, inclusion work is going to continue next year. You have the new math curriculum, the professional development work. And so a June meeting, Nan probably could have done a lot more. But I think it's important to look at what we did accomplish this year and to be grateful for the team that we have. And Nan and Eric are a big part of that. So I'm glad that they got an opportunity to present to the committee tonight.
Thanks, John. All right, that will move us along into the finance and organizational part of the evening. We did, before I invite Michelle to connect with us, we did have a schedule of bills that was in the Dropbox. Can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills totaling $421,202.69?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Anybody have any questions on that? All right, I will recall Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next up is the contracts for renewal. So Michelle, I will let you take it away.
Great, thank you. So in your packet is a memo detailing all of our facility service maintenance contracts that are up for renewal. This year, we did not have to go out to bid because all the contracts are currently in place. So we're actually just looking for a one-year extension on each of them. Going forward in future years, next time we bid them out, we may actually be looking for a multi-year contract depending on, on where we are at that time. But so in your packet is the memo and it details eight current contracts that we have. I'm just going to run through them super quick and not give you all the detail on them as it's in the memo. I should mention that some of these contracts are joint with the town. So the amounts that I am stating are actually the overall contract amount and then we split it between town and school. So for those four contracts that we do have joint with the town, the Board of Selectmen will also have to approve and sign the contract extension. But first contract is our on-call plumbing contract. It's currently awarded to Robert Irvine and Sons in the amount of $43,080. Our second contract is our HVAC mechanical repairs contract currently held by Cooling and Heating Specialists in the amount of $29,980. The third one is our HVAC control work contract, and that's awarded to Automated Building Systems, Inc. in the amount of $35,436. Our roofing and repairs contract is held by Greenwood Industries, Inc. in the amount of $29,160. Our Simplex fire alarm maintenance contract, which is only for the high school and vet school, is held by Johnson Controls in the amount of $15,285. Our fire alarm maintenance contract for all other schools and town buildings is with B&amp;B Engineering doing business as LW Bills in the amount of $68,000. Our elevator maintenance contract is held by Embry Elevator and the amount is $51,400. And lastly, our boiler maintenance contract is currently held with Combustion Service Company of New England in the amount of $78,000. Request that the committee consider approval of the extension, one-year extension on all of these contracts.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, so there, we have to go through each of these individually. So I will just start in with motions. Can I please get a motion to award a one-year extension of the on-call plumbing contract to Robert Irvine and Sons of Lynn in the amount of $43,080? And to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Questions? Okay, Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, can I get a motion to award a one-year extension of the HVAC mechanical repairs contract to Cooling and Heating Specialists of Newton in the amount of $29,980? And to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to award a one-year extension of the HVAC control work contract to Automated Building Systems, Inc. in the amount of $35,436 and to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to award a one-year extension of the roofing repairs contract to Greenwood Industries, Inc. of Worcester in the amount of $29,160? And to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Megan, moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Emily Barron?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to award a one-year extension of the Simplex fire alarm maintenance contract to Johnson Controls of Canton in the amount of $15,285? And to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to award a one-year extension of the fire alarm contract to B&amp;B Engineering of Georgetown, Massachusetts in the amount of $68,000 and to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to award a one-year extension of the elevator maintenance contract to Embry Elevator of Woburn, Massachusetts in the amount of $51,400? And to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And finally, can I get a motion to award a one-year extension of the boiler maintenance contract to Combustion Service Company of New England of Cambridge, Massachusetts in the amount of $78,000 and to authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Baron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Michelle. All right, and you've got one more thing up for us, Michelle, with some donations to accept.
Couple more votes for you here. So we currently have two donations that we are recommending for consideration. The first is from the Marblehead Boosters Club. They coordinated the fundraiser for our outdoor tents that we're all very aware of. We just received a second check, so we had our first check in the amount of $19,395 and the second check that just came in this past week was $652.28. So the total that we collected through this fundraiser was just over $20,000 and we are very appreciative of that. The total cost of our tents exceeded just over $36,000. So this, this accounted for more than half of that, which is, is great towards our district. So I would like to request the school committee consider approving this donation.
Thank you, Michelle. And thank you to the boosters as well. Can I get a motion to accept two donations from the Marblehead Boosters Club Incorporated in the amount of $19,395 and $652.28 to be used for outdoor tents?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, and the second donation is from the estate of Barbara S. Gray and it is to the scholarship fund in the name of Donald J. Gray and Barbara S. Gray. This check is one of the final portions of the disbursement in the amount of $313.74. I do want to make note that this brings the total donation from the estate of Barbara Gray to just over $560,000, which is a substantial scholarship fund for our students. So we're extremely grateful for this scholarship and that Mrs. Gray, you know, considered Marblehead High School in her final estate planning. So just this donation is a very small piece of that in the amount of the $373, but we do need to formally accept that. And we do want to get some written acknowledgement off to the, the organization that is handling her, her benefit, you know, the, the people who are benefiting from this.
Thank you, Michelle. And again, thank you to the estate of Barbara S. Gray and the Gray family. Can I get a motion to accept a donation from the estate of Barbara S. Gray in the amount of $373.74 to be added to the Donald J. Gray and Barbara S. Gray Scholarship Fund?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox? Can you say that one more time?
Yes.
Thank you. And Emily Baron?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All of that passes. All right, Michelle, that was it for the evening, correct?
Yes, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. That brings us to closing business. Does anybody have any new business? Sarah?
So I had several people from the community reach out to me today. And this being new business, we don't need to get into the details of this, but if we can get the information on the detailed itemized invoices of our Back Together Marblehead website, particularly as it pertains to the server. And if we, we host those, if we're operating those ourselves right now, if we pay for them and when. And also, you know, is Steven taking those over now? Who's, who's kind of running those? So if we could get that information, there's been requests for it and I, I'm not tech savvy. I don't understand any of this. So I just, you know, I felt that because there was a lot of questions, I just wanted, I was torn, but I just wanted to make the request for that information. Thank you.
Yep, sure, Sarah. Thank you. Any other new business? All right, that brings us to correspondence. And we did have one piece of correspondence that came in. Let me just pull it up so I'm reading everything correctly. It is the Marblehead Recognizing, Recognition of Juneteenth. So we are being invited to join everyone at Abbott Hall tomorrow, June 18th at 5:00 PM as they raise the Juneteenth flag. And Jackie Belfecker, the Board of Selectmen, will be there and a few various people reading poems and giving introductions. Dr. Bucky, it looks like you will be a part of that presentation. Some reflections and it should be a nice evening memorializing and honoring the annual commemoration that marks the day when the Union General Gordon Granger reached Galveston, Texas with the news that the Civil War had ended and enslaved people were free. And on that day, June 19th, 1865, was more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed by President Lincoln. So it would be great if everybody would join us there tomorrow evening. All right, that brings us to our, did anybody else, there was no other correspondence. Okay. That brings us to our second public comment. So if anyone would like to make a public comment, please raise their hand. Jean Skona?
Hi again, Jean Skona, 16 Foster Street. Sorry to belabor this, but it was really unclear to me at the beginning of the meeting, Megan and Sarah, what you were stating about polystyrene. Are you, are you saying that the schools, when they open in the fall, there will be no polystyrene in any of the schools? In one of the schools, can you clarify?
John, do you want to, do you want to take that?
That is our intention, that there will be no polystyrene trays. And currently, Richard is costing that out and we're working with Michelle at what we can order now in anticipation of that. But that is the operational goal, that there will be no polystyrene. And so I think that's why the committee didn't vote on it because that was our intention in the first place.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. That's excellent, excellent, exciting news. And I look forward to having further confirmation. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jean. All right, I don't have any other hands raised. So I will adjourn the meeting at 9:18. Thank you, everyone.